Speak, please speak loudly because again we don't have microphones and this is being recorded on YouTube. My name is Mike Waymoth. I am the chair. With us tonight is John Baranco, Steve Gannon, Terry McCartney, Patrick McTeague, William Rotella and Jay Sheckman. And then from our city staff, we have Ella Parker, Terry Wallen, Jim Hetzel, Adam Chanel, Lorraine Tappan, and taking the minutes tonight is Jamie. So welcome everyone. I don't know. We have an American flag in here.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for that. All right. We're just about done. Before we get into tonight's meeting, if I could get an approval of the minutes from our April meeting.
Does that move?
Does that move by Sherry? Does that move by Patrick McTeague? Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none or approved? Next. You are here. Good. If you are going to speak tonight, you should have signed in and we have a card and we will call you. When you get called, unless you're the association representing an association, you will get three minutes. If you're representing an association, you will get five minutes. Anyone planning to testify this evening, please raise your right hand, stand and raise your right hand and be sworn in.
Can you talk to the board who stand or raise your right hand? Do you swear affirm to tell the truth, go and do nothing but the truth?
Thank you all for that. Okay, before we get started, is it the board's pleasure to make the staff recommendations part of each individual case as we hear it instead of reciting it over and over and over again?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. All right, we have motion second?
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Don't move. All right. First item, case number UDP P two two zero zero five. They have requested they were deferred from last month. They've again asked to be deferred until June twenty first. Any comment? If not, I will entertain a motion. Please note that Brad Cohen has joined us.
Hi.
Hello.
This is great.
Is there a motion?
Motion to approve the deferral.
Second.
June twenty first.
Second.
Second by Shari. Thank you. Any more discussions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That will be deferred until June twenty first. All right, I didn't see Stephanie. She showed up. There you are. Okay, good. Then we can move forward. This is case number UDP S two two zero six four. We're going to have disclosures. Patrick, I'm going to start down with you. Drive by the site. Steve?
Site visit and spoke to applicant's attorney.
Jay?
I said visit and spoke to applicant's attorney.
Site visit spoke to applicant's attorney.
Brad Cohen?
Ella is trying to get your attention.
You want to do that before that?
I think you're.
Okay. So, so, all right, I'm halfway through. Okay. So we're going to unwind that. We're going to hear case number three before case number two, of which we all received earlier today, a request for deferral to the June meeting. Any discussion, any vote? Motion?
A move that we defer to the next meeting, June, what's the date?
I think it's June twenty first. Well, we're going to hear the item, the doc come back next month while we, while we present the item and take it under consideration. There is?
Getting get it, I guess.
Okay, this is, this is uncharted waters for me. So is, how does this proceed? So I'm assuming the objection is specifically to defer the item, correct?
If I may, so Richard DeWitt, on behalf of the, we filed the notice of interveater affected party, represent Harvard Place condominium, one of the neighboring properties. So our, what we'd like you to hear today before you decide on whether to defer this is actually our request to deny the application. And that's based upon Board Statute one six six point oh three three. So what that statute says is that a municipality has to approve, approve with conditions or deny an application within a hundred and eighty days of when that application is deemed complete. And today we found out through the planner, Adam, that that application was deemed to complete on May twenty second, twenty twenty two. So today's actually the three hundred and sixty fifth day that that application has been pending. And so the city did its job, May twenty second, twenty twenty two, and actually deemed it complete. But this has been delayed that much amount of time. So the only exceptions to that is you can, the parties, the municipality and the city can agree upon an extension, but that's only under special circumstances. It can only be a reasonable extension and that's only for force majeure or for special exceptions and stuff like that. That's not the case here. So what we would ask you to do is actually deny the application, have the applicant go back, start anew. They're already, have already submitted either to us and I submitted it to staff several different plans, projects and additions to what they're seeking as an application. So what we're asking for is for them to just start anew, go back to the table and refile. So that's what we would ask the board to consider.
Have the applicant and the city agreed to defer this or have they agreed to the statute that he referenced?
Extend.
Extend the, the, the dates. So the city and the applicant are agree as a matter of fact. Okay. Yeah, I, I'm going to turn it over to you guys to have some discussion, but the fact that it was already to me mentioned that it's being deferred. I don't know why people didn't show up tonight knowing that was possibly going to be deferred. So anyway, I'll turn it over to you guys then we'll figure out whether we're going to be here tonight or defer till next, next next month. I'm going to let the attorney go first.
Since, since this is a deferral, a, a request for deferral, I don't think that it's appropriate to vote on a motion to attack the basis of what is it, what the applicant is. It would be more apropos to attack, if you're going to attack it, the day that we are going to hear the actual applicant. Because like you said, because this deferral was filed and possibly people didn't show up today to discuss in favor or, or against the project. I would, I would think that the best route here is to defer it. It's not, it's thirty days. So it's not, if it's not good today, it'll be not good in thirty days. So I would defer it for the thirty days and that, that would be what I, what I think is appropriate for it.
Okay, Jay, I'm going to let age before beauty goes. So John?
So, and this is a question for Shari and maybe you as well, Ella. In the past, after this Florida statute came out, somebody exercised their right and became kind of famous for doing that. And the city was forced to approve a project. So I have been asked on other projects in the past for almost waiting for the developer to waive their rights through that Florida statute. That way, it's almost like a tolling agreement. Is that something that's been presented to the applicant or discussed or?
I think the staff has already agreed to the date that it says. I'm not sure staff want to go on the date or, but I understand that that date has been used by staff. The statute actually says of the party, so it's two, it's the city and the applicant. Three to agree the whole extension of time. It doesn't mandate that ask for support, which is an articulately in the event of course, so doesn't mandate that. So it says what it says. Determine whether or not it's reasonable for court. That's the issue of that. Now that's where we, that is challenged. They have to go forward. And you have to get to work with those two. Like if this does get, we need a call period, they have to make it.
And that's usually, that's usually what happens. It's like, it's only, it's the other way around. It's usually the applicant. It's, it's, it's better for the applicant because it's like, oh, you missed the one eighty. Now you have to agree. Right. By getting the deferral, now the city has an opportunity to call this project up. If, if they both wait.
Okay, yeah. That was my exact similar like concern is that in the past, when we've seen this hundred eighty day limitation, it's that if a hundred day, eighty days have elapsed, the applicant has a case to make that it's been deemed approved. So my concern is that in just outright denying it today, we would be setting up the applicant to go and make a case that in fact they were already approved before this meeting. And it would be, you know, in everyone's best interest here for this to be deferred so that it could be fully heard and a decision made and that not be the outright outcome.
Anybody else want to be heard on this? Anybody want to make a motion?
Someone already did.
Yeah, we have a motion.
Do we have a second? I'll second.
No, this is at the, at the board levels. It's not, it's not open to public. Yeah, next month, if this is the way it goes, it will be open to all the discussion. So we have a motion. We have a second. Is there any more discussion before we vote on this? All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, unanimous. So it's deferred until June twenty first, twenty twenty three?
July twenty first.
June twenty.
Ten. Which is it?
June.
June twenty first, twenty twenty three. All right. If you folks showed up to be heard on that, you're welcome to hang out. We only have a couple more items to hold there. Otherwise, thank you for coming. Isn't safe to say you will not be here next month? If you come back next month to be heard, don't come here. We'll figure out where it is, but it won't be here. All right. And the elevator is a little stuck, so feel free to use the fire pole.
I think it's set up by, I, I, I think it's set up by the oldest city.
All right, now. Instead of muddying up the waters with who voted what and who talked to who, I'm going to do a reset. Still making stop conditions part of each and every item, so I'm not going to repeat that. But let's get back to disclosures. This is now the case number UDP S two two zero six four. Patrick?
Site visit and I did have a phone conversation with counsel for the applicant.
Steve?
Site visit and the same thing, a phone conversation with applicants.
Okay.
Same. Site visit and phone, phone with applicants.
Sorry?
I had a phone call with the applicant's attorney.
John?
Phone call with applicant's attorney.
Bill?
Phone call with the applicant's attorney.
And I as well had a phone call with applicant's attorney and the design button. So with that, Miss Two Thinker, would you like to prevent? And if you'll do me a favor, because this is going to be videotaped, if you'll stand at my opposite end because against the camera somewhere.
It looks like it's there.
I think it's up there. Okay. Oh, they're looking at me? All right. And if you're going to speak on this item, doesn't look like anybody's going to speak on this item, but if you're going to speak on this, oh, we do have someone. Okay. Please stand at the end of the, the conference table and speak loudly because we do not have any microphones. Stephanie?
Thank you so much for allowing me to be here this evening. Stephanie, on behalf of the Apollo Company's CubeSmart and AVO, this is what we made this evening. This is a, this would have been a segment level two project, but it requires parking reduction. I will just state at the outset, I'm just going to go through a couple of slides, but the, the ULTR is a little overparked for self-storage. This is a Cube, CubeSmart is self-administered, self-managed real estate investment trust. And they own, manage thirteen hundred self-storage facilities. So this is their business. This is, this is the core business they, they really So the, sounds like a lot of you did a site visit. Of course, this is the I ninety five.
So.
Sorry. Oh, it's touch me?
Not used to all this high tech. Firefighters really, yeah, they get the good stuff.
We have, we got shot spotter on there. We got fire spotter on there.
Of course, this is, this is federal highway, South Federal Highway. This is I ninety five ramp and property is right here. So and you can see it's very industrial in nature. It's up near, it's shallow there. Right now it's just empty land. It's actually got some, some outdoor storage on it. The address is thirty twenty. As I said, it's a vacant lot and uses commercial setting. Just data, this is all in your, in your backup. It meets landscaping. It, it meets every, everything. All, all the setbacks are to code, except for So what we're showing you here is what the parking requirement is for this office. And as you know, most of us have self-coverage units, right? There's usually one person there most. And we've got, there's two, two bike parking spaces and the required parking is thirty in warehouse. Thirteen standard spaces, one ADA. There's two on-street spaces. This is just, just again, it's a, it's a national company. They run these everywhere and they're very familiar with what their parking gates are. Still a little bit overparked, but, but certainly This is just the IT parking analysis that shows what the actual is for typical mini warehouse self-storage. And this is just other examples of CubeSmart. It's in Bronx, New York. Sanford, Connecticut. All the pure shared parking spaces. And this is the same. So of course this is South Federal Highway here. South Federal Highway here is your backup for me. See that it's in that triangle. Let's drive this in Southwood Sixth Avenue. Our entrance and our exit here and we're showing I will tell you, this image confused me a little bit. This is supposed to be, this is supposed to be the cars on Sex Driving. Parking, but the parking is all in, in, so there's the entrance, there's the exit. The project. So nice rendering. We worked a lot with staff with Adam on really making it very office-like in nature. And if you have any questions?
Anybody have any questions from applicant's attorney before we open up to public meetings? Thank you, Miss Two Thinker.
Thank you very much.
I'm going to go on a limb and say you're Fernando Silva. Are you Fernando Silva?
No.
No, yes, Fernando's.
Oh. That's why you're hiding behind the column. I couldn't see you. Like I say, you're the only guy here that I don't recognize. Fernando, would you like to speak on this item? Okay.
Okay.
Well, we had, we had a speaker's card for you. Edward Abo. Is he hiding behind the column too? Would you like to speak on this item, sir? Is there anybody from the public that would like to speak on this item? Yes, ma'am. Yes, I started all over. So we got some double disclosures. So seeing no one else, we're going to close the public portion of the meeting, bring it back to the board for discussion or a vote. Adam?
Adam Schott, I'm a case planner. I just have a minor modification to the staff report. The first page, paragraph three, the last sentence says the applicant is proposing fourteen onsite parking spaces and requesting a proper reduction of seventeen spaces. It should stay sixteen.
Stefan? Oh, go ahead. Sorry. I, I just wanted to discuss real briefly. I, I'm not a big fan of parking reductions, but when it comes to like these type of structures and my experience with self-storage. So there's a self-storage, I think that everyone's familiar with. I think it's called Jumper or something like that. It's on Southeast Third, maybe, next to, what, it's like that Flagler Village area uptown by the track. There's like two cars. First of all, they're, they're parking a lot of floods, but I mean, I don't even think you'd get more than two cars in that parking lot when it floods, but there, on any given day, there's like two or three cars in that, in that specific storage unit. I'm actually familiar and I didn't know this was, this was the same CubeSmart, but I'm familiar with their Bronx. Is it Bronx property? Is that the, is there, you have a property in the Bronx? Is that the, is there, you have a property in the Bronx? Yeah, so I, I'm familiar with one of their other properties, and, um, there's never any, there's very few cars when it comes to self-storage. Cause people either leave their stuff, most people leave their stuff there and then forget about it, and they get a bail at the end of them, but. Most people, they drop their stuff off and they, and they take off, so that's, I just wanted to make sure. Because I never wanna look like I am voting for one and voting and not voting for another, but when it comes to parking reductions. I look at the specific, uh, project, and I know personally that. I've never seen a self-storage, uh, facility use thirty spots ever. At one, I've never seen thirty cars at any self-storage, so that's what I have to say.
Sure.
Sure, I have, I have the same feeling about the, um, about the parking reductions. Didn't we send something to the commission not that long ago?
Yes, but that's why I wanted to make myself clear.
Right, we were waiting to have these parking reductions, and so either we shouldn't be doing this.
Right.
Or the code should be adjusted and as, as it relates to something so obscure as a, as a.
Storage facility.
Place versus a restaurant versus a.
That's the problem.
Yeah, we, we sent a request to, to do a parking study and to understand in today's world, ride share and all that kind of stuff, so. Um, maybe at the end we'll get an update, but there is one from staff, do those second to collect their thoughts on that. Anybody else want to be heard on this?
I just wanna piggyback on what Sherry was saying. The only risk we ever have of modifying the code and just making, you know, broad speaking change like that is you always run into the anomalies. Chick-fil-A, Starbucks. Those are.
The other way around.
Right, so although we can reduce it, you could have that anomaly again in Cube Smart where it's like, hey, Cube Smart, man, you can play video there. Everybody would be.
These guys don't like like video games, guys. But yes, I get it.
But it, it's good to have checks and balances like that, every project's unique, and in this particular case, there's nothing here that's an anomaly. Seems like basic, same.
My perspective is if you're a developer and you know what you're getting yourself into, the aspect of using parking. Sometimes, I, I think that's true. So my only question to you, Stephanie, is not based on the business zoning. Does Cube Smart as a operational policy allow businesses to operate in these? Storage?
No, this is just, um, this is true storage, this is, as Mr. Cohen said, they drop off their stuff, maybe they're, you know.
I mean, that's how swap shops start, you know, they're a little storage place out there. I'll trade this and I'll trade that, and they're swapping all parts of it, so, so there, there isn't anybody that's gonna set up shop with phone lines and. And intercept, so, so, so the parking is there to pick up or drop off materials in your storage facility and on you go.
Jay? Yeah, I would, I would just add like brands like this, you know, like Wawa, like, obviously Chick-fil-A is an anomaly, but like Cube Smart, they have. Specific criteria for sites that there be a subs- significant, you know, s- satisfactory parking and. Facilities for them to successfully operate their business, so, you know, I doubt Cube Smart would even be involved with a project like this. If it didn't have what would be needed for their project to operate successfully.
And I think when we revisit this whole parking thing, first of all, it may not even be under this administration, who knows how long it takes to put together. But I think it should be done, but there's always ways of putting stopgap measures, whether it's by size. Or by, you know, fast food versus a casual restaurant, and, you know, that kind of, it's gotta drive through, so there's, there's. There will be some ways. Whoever gets to figure that out probably will figure out every angle and they'll be able to modify it, but I agree to, to, to. To sit here every month and, and talk about a parking reduction. Uh, I think it's time for that to be done, so, alright, I don't remember, do we have a motion?
We don't.
Okay, so is there any more discussion? Or anybody like to make a motion?
Motion to approve. Motion to approve of staff conditions.
Second? Second by Bill Rotell? Uh, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, have a good night. Alright, now we're gonna go on to case number UDP L two two zero zero four, we need to do disclosures on this.
No.
Okay, very good. Any more disclosures, Macaria? For yours, I don't know if you heard when we started up, I know you walked in just a little bit late. So you're down there with no microphone, I know you're accustomed to yelling, but we really want to be careful now. With, with.
It's a touchscreen, you can do it yourself even. We just learned that. It's a big touchscreen.
This is, um, a tax amendment, a comprehensive plan tax amendment to the mixed-use land use category. If it sounds familiar to you, that's because it should be come over to you, we came in front of you back in November on this. Um, it was for a map amendment at that time. And the tax amendment, so it was for the Westin Hotel. The Westin Hotel and the parking lot, which is proposed, should be redeveloped for multi-family. Um, at that time, we know the next slide. Side again. So back in November, we came in front of you for the map amendment and the tax amendment, operating plan, those were approved. They then went to the safety mission in January of twenty twenty, from twenty twenty three. Um, and they were approved unanimously there as well, they were transmitted to Rar County and to the state. Which is a customary thing, you transmit the text amendment and. Map amendment to the city, Department of Economic Opportunity, and from there, they review it for and provide technical comments. Um, the VEO, the Department of Economic Opportunity, came back with comments on the text amendment. And some of the language that we were changing to the mixed-use land use category. Um, and so what we're here on now is to show you what that proposed, proposed language is. Um, staff has proposed some language, and then I have also proposed an alternative language that I think still accomplishes what. The next slide, this is the letter from D E O, and basically what they asked is that there was a Florida statute that says. Mixed use development, um, should include some sort of percentage of distribution of uses, next slide. This is the actual statutory provision that is contained in Florida statute that that D E O is concerned about, and basically it says that there should be. Percentage of distributions for other standards and density intensity standards, and each should be stated. So what we've done is go back and revisit the text amendment that we, that you all approved back in November. This is what staff is proposing to add, the area in yellow. Says there's, what they're proposing is to add language that says there is a minimum of two uses required within the development. And a minimum percentage of ten percent of the total floor area for any one use. What we're proposing is instead of total floor area, that would be the entire building area. Next slide. Proposing instead of total floor area, we're proposing to use net site area. And the reason for that is when you look at the total floor area of a building, it's the residential building in particular, it's required under this category. To have a residential component. Um, and a non-residential, so if you're talking about the residential building. Those buildings tend to be hundreds of thousands of square feet in size, so ten percent of that is going to be very, it's gonna be extreme. Um, we're proposing instead to take a look in, at the site area and use that as the method for calculating the ten percent. And to. I want, I like to put things in perspective and maybe direct you to a project downtown so you can see the impact that. The way staff is proposing it and then the way I'm proposing it. The next slide. Needs, this is actually, before I get to that, um, what my proposal is use the site area. And then the commercial would be ten percent of that, it would be one acre site, it would be four thousand three hundred fifty-six. And then it increases all the way down to six acres, we of course have more than six acres, but just for. Uh, discussion purposes, a six acre site would be required to have twenty-six thousand one hundred thirty-six minimum. Next slide is the case study, um, I selected, um. The Manor, which I figured a lot of people are familiar with, it's the, if you're not, it's the building, uh, that's a sort of catty corner to the fresh market. Has the cycle bar, palata, brass tap, um, dentist, uh, there's a number of, uh, retailers options.
Every placement.
Right along federal, so next slide. The Manor, that project is five point two six acres in size, or when you convert that to square footage, it's two hundred and twenty-nine thousand nine hundred and fourteen. Square feet, that project also has three hundred and eighty-two units. Um, there's twenty-four thousand seven hundred and fifty square feet of commercial on the ground floor, so all of that area along federal highway. Is twenty-four thousand seven hundred and fifty square feet. Um, and then when you look at the total floor area, which is the way the staff is, is looking at this. Um, the total floor area of the residential is seven hundred and sixty thousand one hundred and ten square feet. That includes the parking garage. Let's eliminate the parking garage from this, just cause I wanna put this into perspective, let's say the parking garage isn't gonna count. The residential leasable area, that's the leasable area, without counting. Uh, recreational areas and things that are typically found in these luxury, uh, multifamily developments. Is three hundred and sixty-five thousand nine hundred and ninety-three. That's the net leasable area, the actual units that they're able to rent. Um, if you look at the language that's proposed by the city, that would mean that that development would have to have seventy-six thousand eleven. Square feet. It has, and I think most of us in here agree, that, that the amounts per footage, commercial square footage of that development has, is actually a pretty comfortable amount. It has twenty-four thousand seven hundred and fifty square feet, it does not have seventy-six thousand eleven square feet. If you look at the way we're proposing it, which is to use the site area, ten percent of the site area, net like, net site area. It would be required to cop twenty-two thousand nine hundred and ninety-one square feet, which is pretty darn close to what it actually. So that is what we're proposing, we're going to treat that language really just the three words, instead of, um, total floor area. We wanna just say that it's the net site area. This, this is this comparison of language, where you have it all in one place.
Okay. Any more, Sherry?
Um, if you, so I'm understanding then that this is a, a minimum.
That's correct.
Right, so if necessary or, or suited project, it could be larger than that minimum amount, but this is a requirement. You shall have this minimum amount, right?
Okay, um, what, what is net site area versus site area?
So it's essentially the area of the land use amendment, um, we call it net site area because sometimes if you have a plat property. Um, you lose some area for dedications and rights of way and things like that, so it's, it's basically the development site. The, the area that is part of the mixed-use land use category, because this is, this is a category. Um, the only cap, the only property that this is going, hopefully going to be, um, placed on is, is the property up on Cypress Creek. Um, if somebody else wants to use this category, they actually have to put in a request, just like we did, and go through a land use amendment process. And change the land use to mixed use to this category.
And when you calculate net site area, you're saying if there's like a, a utility easement for a pipe, it would be like net of all the easements or like what?
No, not net of easements, because the owner still owns the underlying, it's an easement, they still own the land. What we're talking about is if the, if, if there's ever a need to plat the property, sometimes you have that, it's, it's somewhat rare in Lauderdale. But sometimes you do have that situation, and when you plat property, you have to dedicate right of way, usually. Uh, there are exceptions to that, you dedicate right of way, and then that land is then passed on, um, owner no longer owns it once the plat is recorded.
So if this were to go your way and there'd be some property that hasn't, hadn't been, um, recently, or it doesn't need to be platted. How would the net area be calculated?
Just the, the land area?
The site area, okay.
Anyone else?
Question on, cause we've approved other types of mixed-use projects, and. It's usually they're trying to get residential, and then they're required to do some form of commercial downstairs, and it's basically the management office. And they call it the gym.
Yeah.
And, um, is there anything being written into this section where those commercial spaces can't be used? Exclusively for the residents of that building or? Or it doesn't go that far?
It doesn't, it doesn't go that far, but, um, it, I think it just references commercial and then verse, non, non, refers to it as non-residential. Doesn't even really refer to it as commercial per se, it refers to it as non-residential.
Gotcha.
But I think we all know that it's a commercial. Off, whether it's office, retail, restaurants, personal services.
Yeah, and just as somebody who's dealt with a lot of that stuff, I mean, if you were doing a commercial building on a lot. With parking, and you didn't have a vertical building, you're just doing a one-story retail, which is. What retail should be, one-story, if you do two-story retail, it fails. So you do one-story retail, you're thirty percent land coverage on a good day with your building. So if you're shooting for thirty percent retail on the ground floor, thirty percent of the site, that's a good number. If you didn't have to put a building on top of it, if you didn't have to have back the house, you didn't have to have, you know, trucks coming into the building. If you didn't have to have a vehicular ramp, so when you look at all those things, you're never gonna get thirty percent in a multi-story mixed-use building. I think ten percent of the. The site area is pretty aggressive, I think it's, it's good. I think it, it would bring meaningful ground floor retail development, um, doing it that way. Um, I just don't think ten percent of the overall building is anywhere in the realm of realistic, it would kill projects. Nobody would ever build it because the minute you have to go to the second floor, you're gonna do office. And you're not making that kind of money on office, developers are not gonna develop a property, and, and my. Opinion, you know, I just, just don't see that happening, it's just gonna be built space that is gonna be tough to use and tough to rent. Doesn't really benefit. Anybody that much, and hey, if somebody wants to do it, they can, you know, always, you know, build more, but I think ten percent's probably. As aggressive as, as you're gonna get there, so.
I'm, go ahead, John. Uh, Brad. Um, can't we modify it to do just the residential space, the actual residential, not the gyms? Not the, uh, laundry rooms, not the actual residential space, cause if you subtract that out, like the, the example that was just given. Which I think that there's other examples that are, that actually do ten percent of the resident, but let's say that example. Subtract it out, you're at three hundred and sixty thousand square feet, and that's probably still including the gym and things of that nature. Um, and that's thirty-six thousand square feet of, of, uh, commercial. What, what I don't wanna have happen is these projects are going up, right? And the whole idea of creating these huge projects with all these people living here is that they don't have to drive anywhere.
Right.
They have retail downstairs, they have a Publix downstairs, they have, uh, a CVS downstairs. So what, what I don't wanna have happen is that, okay, hey, we can get away with less, let's get away with less. And then all of a sudden, the whole theory of why we're doing all this and having all these units so that it's not gonna cause more traffic. That goes down the toilet, so that's what I'm worried about, so that's, and I discussed this on the phone today, you know, in terms of like what my questions were gonna be. Because I'm really worried about that, because we have Sears Town that's going, like, all these places are going up with the idea. That there's gonna be a percentage of retail so that people don't have to keep driving their cars, and they can do some walking. And they're gonna walk down, just like, like that project there, I think it's a pretty decent project, I would have liked to see more retail on that street. Because I think that street could use more retail, but it's a good start. But don't forget, there's also like Publix across the street and stuff like that, there's amenities across the street that have retail that you don't really, okay. So it's, it's a very difficult subject for me, because I think that the city wants. And I think that's why the, the state and the county wants more retail, because they wanna cut back on people. It, the, the traffic's gonna get crazy, and it's crazy now, people come in here and complain all the time. Um, but the traffic just, I, I think that's the main concern here, is that we want people to be able to walk in the city, be able to walk to the supermarket, walk to the CBS. And I think that that's why, do I think that ten percent of everything is, is appropriate? Probably not. But I think ten percent of the residential units, not including the gym. But I think ten percent of the residential units, not including the gym, not including amenities, not including. You know, there's um places that have five thousand square feet of of uh of, you know, a conference room, you know, or a movie theater. You know, some of these places are are having like, you know, sit-down movie theaters. So I would eliminate all that and I would say whatever the net residential is, actual residential. Minus everything else, ten percent of that I think is reasonable, because like I said, looking at that project, it would be another ten thousand square feet. That's not obnoxious. Another ten thousand square feet is is is. So that's what my feeling is, and I think that um. Uh you know, obviously, everybody's going to have an opinion on this, but I just.
I'm I'm moving the devil's advocate.
Sure.
Because right now there are a lot of thirty, forty story buildings going on.
Yeah.
That are residential, that have foreplay of, say, fifteen thousand feet, twenty thousand.
Yeah.
So and they're on a very small foreplay. So now you have to apply that to all that square footage that you're suggesting. Well, first of all, it won't even fit on the first floor.
Right.
It wouldn't fit on the first or second floor. It would be the third floor. If you're doing a ten percent mentality. You got to take ten percent of the height of that building, which is thirty three stories and all of that. So I like the site plan thing. The other thing for me, Brad, and dealing with a lot of developers, these guys are extremely sophisticated. They know what they're doing. They know when or who or how they want to bring people in based on what's in neighboring uh commercial properties, just like you were talking about. When the main was being built, it was top secret to keep uh their mouth shut that uh that uh green market was going in there. When these guys were ecstatic about getting, you know, two-thirds of the first floor.
So look how much.
I think we need to have some sort of guidelines. I'd I'd go less than ten percent, me personally. Again, I think these guys, especially if you're going to it's if it's ten percent of the site area. Uh I think that is something that's manageable and it warrants having more commercial. And let these guys be the ones to make the decision. Let them be investing. It's just like with parking. If you want to build a restaurant and only have one parking space, well, you're going to have one customer for dining there, so.
The problem that I have with that is that, and this very briefly, the problem that I have with that is that. That they're not, it it's not like, oh, if you don't have enough parking, people won't come. It people just get in their car and try some. That's what we're trying to avoid.
Right.
And like with the main, the main is a good project because of all the retail space. But the main isn't a good project because, I I mean, when the main went up, I mean, that you got the a market, the supermarket downstairs. You got the Brazilian place on the corner. You got Oxy's. I mean, they must have forty thousand square feet, fifty thousand square.
And it's an eight hundred thousand square foot building, so they would.
I don't know what the actual.
You've got two towers of forty stories.
Yeah, I know, but that's office, we're talking residential. So I don't know what the actual residential is. My guess is the residential is probably half of that, right? So if you have forty four hundred thousand, ten percent is forty thousand.
Parking reduction, I don't know.
So that's it. I I I I get it though. I get it.
This is this is.
I think it's a tough.
This is like an anomaly, right? I mean, this is not something that, I mean, how often is this going to surface before P and Z? And and if you put handcuffs on it, it'll be never.
It'll yeah, I I was going to say, we're the first ones to ever use this category, because we're in a unique situation where we have a residential land use right now. And a and a county zoning um category that doesn't even exist. So um and I don't see this being used on small parcels, frankly, because you have to go through a land use amendment process to even use this category. So a one-acre parcel, if somebody came to me and said, I have this one-acre parcel, I want to go to this mixed use category, I would tell them that they were crazy. It's it's an eighteen-month process and I don't know why, I can't think of a reason why I would recommend to somebody that they do that on a one-acre parcel. There's exceptions, but these are really intended to be on parcels that I, and that's why I chose the Manor. Because I think that's probably the more likely parcel size that you'll see this on. And it's about the size of the Weston, actually. So the Weston site is about six six point six acres. Um the Manor, which was the project I used as the case study, is five point two acres. And um I think that's probably where you're gonna see, you're not going to see this category requested that often, but I would like to see it used. I don't want to be the last person, the only person to ever use it. And my concern is if you start using ten percent of the floor, total floor area, it will, this may be the last time that you see this. Um unless you find somebody that finds a shopping center and wants to keep all the shopping center hard and develop just the parking lot. That's the only place I can see this being utilized. Even then, I think it's.
So everybody here who has been on the board knows that I'm the biggest proponent of including retail as part of projects. Like the last meeting, you know, when Mary had suggested, or or whenever we had the meeting on Seventeenth Street, when Mary had suggested to take the retail out of the garage. Um to take away some of the parking needs, I I pushed back on that and pushed for that. Um so I'm very much in favor of including retail generally on projects for there to be mixed use. Um I I want to be a little bit of a devil's advocate, uh just broadly speaking to what you had said, Michael. Um I know like at Cube Smart, they they're really building for the long-term operations of their business. But the factor of the manner when it comes to residential development properties, many of the developers are merchant builders. They're in the business of stabilizing the asset and selling it, um and maximizing the amount of value that they have. And retail and commercials generally struggles to lease up as quickly and they don't often get as much credit when it comes time for the sale. You know, within a few months after finally leasing the multifamily. So they try to minimize as much retail as possible to be included on a project. Um I've seen examples, for example, on the south side of Tarpin River, across the street from Publix, there is a sixty-story project approved. On half of an acre where at first they only had enough retail size of a Starbucks with six hundred apartment units in the building. That's not what we want to see as our city develops uh i- into more of a mixed-use living environment, and we push back on that. Um I think, you know, in this case, the floor area ratio is kind of, there's a, we're kind of missing here. Of of the height. I mean, the allowable height here is six floors. So in order to get a big residential building with six floors.
It's it's the FAR is limited to three. There's not a height.
There's no height.
Doesn't prescribe prescribe a height.
Yeah.
Um but it does have an FAR limitation of three.
Oh, so yours has, your project has no height. Um your project has.
Process of rezoning to the PDD category.
Right.
Tight limitation of thirty.
Yeah.
A hundred and twenty-five percent of the, yeah, it's it's about thirty stories. We're not doing anywhere near that. But this this actual land use category will probably drive the, um I mean, I think the PDD actually was a three point two. So the the PDD has a um FAR limitation of three point two. It reminds me why we changed it. In this land use category, that was one of the text amendments. We went from, I think it was a two point O to a three point O to be consistent with the PDD zoning category.
Yeah.
But yeah, this this actual, because it's a land use category, does not have a height limitation that is not something we'll see in.
Right.
Land use categories.
I guess my point is if somebody does a five-acre site with a six-story, eight-story building like the Manor, then it's it's like a onerous amount of retail. Um but if somebody does like, were to do a one-acre site, which I understand is difficult to do through this process. Then, you know, if they were to do on one acre a thirty-story building, then you're only requiring um. Four thousand square feet of retail on, you know, of commercial space in, you know, a thirty-story building. Um which is, to put into perspective, you know, pretty small. Um you know, that's what the size of, what would be a good example on Los Olas of something four thousand feet. Like one one Lululemon store or something.
It's probably bigger than that.
Yeah, right. So that's that's my only concern is like that this isn't really taking into consideration what the allowable height is. In um in the respective areas.
But you can't. I think you I think you guys are 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 not giving the developers, we're spending probably hundreds of millions of dollars in situations like that. The respect of going, what they're they're wanting to put out there.
But also viable, right? What's financially viable.
Right.
And that's the analysis. And it's always the analysis.
I mean, Amory was built with, I don't believe they've got any retail or commercial in that building. And they're thriving right behind Los Olas.
Yeah, but that's also a tiny little fluff. That's what our point is, is that they wouldn't switch to this this zoning. This zoning is for like something that's five acres, six acres. The the Amory won't be in this zone. It'd be something like that project, that Weston project. So that's my whole point, is if you have the room, like Sears Town, I don't know how many acres that is, but that's in my head. That that Sears Town project is what, five acres, four acres? I don't know. It's a pretty big project. I I I don't know. But that's what's in my head. The Amory projects, the projects like the other one, the Venetia or whatever, that it has a little wine bar downstairs. Those are not really the worry. The worry is for projects that are six acres. And there's only a couple of those that are going to, you know, four acres. There's only a couple of those that are left. She looks like she's going to say something.
For the times right.
Oh.
I will say this, I like the idea of pushing retail.
Right.
On any developer and this ten percent of the site area makes so much more sense. Ten percent of the building, you're going to handcuff what you can build on top.
Right.
Because there's no way as a developer you would ever build all this junk so you could have two hundred units. You're not going to do the two hundred units. You're going to move on and do something else.
Go to a different city.
Now, ten percent of the ground floor area, it makes sense, because retail is about. Of the site plan. Because ten percent of the that space of the site plan makes sense.
We already agreed early on.
Where retail goes.
Has to be on the floor, round floor. It should be tied to the site.
Yeah, so I actually, I completely agree that the ten percent of the whole building is crazy and way too much.
Oh, yeah.
I just want to make that clear. I just, my only concern that I want us to account for is like if there were a one-acre example where it is. You know, thirty-story building, like is four thousand square feet enough for a thirty-story building of? It maybe in Los Olas, Amory, where you can walk through thousand stores.
But you can't move babies, Jay. I mean, this is going to be applied city.
That's my point. So what I'm saying is like, Amory, which is next to Los Olas Boulevard, the most amenitized part of our city, you know, might do great. All the pro- all the residential projects will fill up, there's no doubt. It's about, it's not about that, though. It's about building a mixed use throughout the city. And having areas that don't have Los Olas, build completely just multifamily projects with no no new retail. Is is a disservice to those areas.
That's why there's the age-old adage of retail follows rooftops. You'll hear that over and over and over again from developers. That there's people living there, there will be retail right on their heels, right on their.
There's the Fat Village project is probably a couple of, I don't know how many acres that is. That's four or five acres. How many square feet of of retail they have? A ton. I mean, that whole front footage is all going to be retail. I don't know. But I just, I guess we should hear from staff.
So we're going to paint a a broader picture of mixed use in the city of Fort Lauderdale. Currently, we have mixed-use buildings that are being built under various land use designations, downtown regional activity center. Commercial land use, employment center, northwest regional activity center. So this is a completely new land use category. And uh the intent as written is the mixed-use designation supports sustainability goals. By creating opportunities for more efficient development patterns that also allow for a wider variety of economic opportunities. Affordable housing, place-making, and access to multimodal options contextual to the surrounding area. So we we expect that over time, people will take advantage of our existing provisions. In the ULDR to develop mixed use in the downtown regional activity center and on the commercial land uses. And uh with the recent updates based upon the county requirements for allowing uh residential. Development based with the provision of affordable housing. The uh general requirement is that on parcels greater than five acres, ten percent of the gross floor area must be commercial. Which, as you know, commercial means office, retail, restaurant, and so forth. So in in this case, uh for the case of the Os- or Cypress Creek, actually, they are more than five acres. It's a six point eight acre acre site, and they are meeting the provision as as proposed by staff. Which is ten percent of the gross total floor area. So the purpose of the mixed-use designation is for those significant projects. Could it be Galleria in the future? Would that be mixed use? And that's where we really would like to see significant commercial uses, retail, restaurant, office spaces. If other folks would like to do a mixed-use project, they can run with our existing code. And the benefit they would be providing in that case would be affordable housing. But the main benefit under this mixed-use land use designation is providing that true mixed abuses. With a higher percentage commercial space overall.
That's what you were saying.
Right.
Yeah.
That's what I that's what I assumed was the the goal of the city, is for these big projects. Like Sears Town, like the where the mall is, is to have projects that are going to have large amounts of. Commercial retail space. I I don't think that it's appropriate. At looking at the numbers, I don't think it's appropriate to add in every single square inch of the building. That's why I'm saying cut out gyms, cut out, cut out, I would say just the resi- whatever the residential square footage is. The raw residential square footage, not the gyms, not the laundries, not the uh, you know, um. Areas to do meetings, the garage.
Net rentable area.
Correct. I'd cut all that out. And I think that's a reasonable, I think that's a reasonable s- putting, you know, splitting the baby here. I think it's reasonable that to to have that, because we're going to have some big projects that are going to come up. I think the Galleria is probably going to be one. I think Sears Town is probably going to be one. And we want to have a place, like especially like Sears Town, like to me, that's going to be. That's a major, you know, that area, I mean, we were all probably here when that area was really, really nasty. Right? So that's going to be something that is going to be a, you know, a jewel in the crown, in my opinion. And I think that you don't want, when they put that project up, you don't want people driving everywhere. I mean, that's going to be another five hundred people in in just in that little area of maybe six hundred. I don't know how many units are proposed. But I think that was the goal of the city, and I think that's.
The article today in the paper stipulated that Sears Town was, they put over a hundred thousand square feet of retail.
Right, that's great.
Right. And they're doing it without this language on there, forced them to do it, because they know they need this for, I think it's eight hundred and eighty-five units. And hundred and twenty hotel rooms and all that. They know what they need to put out there to have a successful site.
Yeah.
If they said, that's good, we'll put sixteen hundred units and they're not doing any retail, it'd be an epic failure.
Right, but there are some people that might do that.
And and if there's empty storefronts, they're going to get in their car and go somewhere else.
Right.
So so the developer will gauge the need.
Right.
Based on this assessment of the location and.
Maybe. I I think a lot, it just depends. You know, some of these projects are being, you know, this is reminds me of two thousand and five. Some of these projects are being sold, sold, sold to hedge funds and all kinds of other things. So I don't know what developers look at, what they don't. I mean, I have a assumption, because I I've talked to people.
Those are sold when they're leased up, Brad, which gets to ninety-seven percent occupancy.
Yeah.
Which means people are going there for a reason. So, I mean, we can sit here and guess what the developers want to do or whatever. I I don't think it's our position to handcuff them with those things.
Okay.
I think that there should be some language and and I think the site plan is, as a minimum, a better solution.
Yeah, I think in this case, the ten percent of the site area makes sense.
It can always be adjusted if there's ever another case down the road. I mean, we're, I went over something that may not be heard again and. Who knows? Forever.
How does it get adjusted? They Sears Town's going to be around the corner and Galleria is going to be around the corner. So I don't think that you never hear it again. I mean, you don't, we're we're just going to say, hey, we're going to adjust that.
I don't think it's applicable to just the zoning. It's the underlying land use that that triggered this, right?
That's that's correct. This is a land use category. It's not a zoning category. So somebody would have to go like Galleria.
Right.
They wanted to use this, they would have to.
If they wanted to use mixed use.
A a whole land use.
Right.
Amendment for the entire parcel and go through the city and the county to to do that.
All right, I got it. Does somebody want to?
Anybody else want to?
I don't know.
Chat it out.
Does anybody else want to weigh in on this?
Sure. I just, I think, I don't know what neighborhood at all, but I just want to make sure the board understands that this is a land use category that. People would have to apply on her, like we just discussed. So it doesn't affect anything in terms of citywide existing.
No, no, I I don't think I.
That's that's one. And the second point being that the land use by its very nature, if you're going to go to a land use specifically called out. As a mixed-use land use, um you know, I think maybe a good solution might be to go ahead and agree that to be consistent with the county regulations. Perhaps we go ahead and revise it to allow it to be for sites that are over five acres. I think that's something that staff could. Be okay with, because I think that's fair. Consistent with the county, but also to the point of, I just want to make, remind everyone, this is not just retail. This could be, again, it's a mixed-use.
Right.
The office, it could be other commercial type of uses that are part of this. Also, we're not pushing retail on everyone.
No, no, understood.
I mean, for I think for that consistency, for this to be consistent with the company, that would be something that.
What are your thoughts on that, Victoria?
Alan, I think, I think it's a good idea, but I think it would still be running afoul of the letter that we received from D E O if we don't have some sort of ratio in there or percentage in there, even if it's under five.
Same ratio, that that, right, that's that's fine, so we could go with with what you're suggesting, under five acres and over five acres.
Ten percent of the site, under five acres, ten percent of the of the residential support footage above five acres.
Can we make it ten acres?
Hey, I'd say it's okay, so.
No, I'm okay with it.
Hurry up and vote up.
I'm okay with that suggestion, I would vote on that.
I I I I I don't think I've got five, can you see, what we're gonna follow that?
I I was gonna make it more ten, ten acres, anything over ten acres, then you have to.
And I think it's like, fully numbers now, yeah, you guys need it on your project.
Yeah, we need it.
And I think the comparison with the manor isn't exactly opposite, it's a regional activity center category, it's more of a neighborhood character that that's even guided in the master plan for the zoning, so it's a little bit of a different scenario, again, this is a land use category that you're not forced to apply under, but if you do, it's for those special projects, so I think that five acres, especially because of the size of the counties.
So what what I, what my perspective is on that, and I'm I'm halfway down the road with you guys, I'm just going to go back to the manor, that's over five acres.
Yeah.
And as Brad put it, you know, it it's 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 almost a gimme, but it's eight thousand square feet shy of using the other formula. Well, where are they gonna give up? They're gonna give up the public's space, you know, you go out there and there's there's two retail buildings, and they're they're gonna give up that space in between the two retail buildings to get that ten thousand feet, so.
No, no, it was more than that.
Does that include the garage?
Not cutting it.
So.
Without the garage.
Yeah, without the garage and all that, I thought there was a just, whatever, but even if it's a negative, forget that it's that. But specifically that, if I'm the developer, I'm not gonna say, well, you know, I'll just put out fewer units, I'm gonna keep the same units, and I'm gonna make some of my amenity space go away, which is the public open area outside.
Okay, so I'm fine with that, I think we just need to clarify that that floor area, when you're getting over five acres, does not include, includes the net saleable, saleable or or leasable area, I think.
Usable.
No, not usable, because everything's usable, it has. Yeah, habitable areas, so it would be just the residential, right? Not like to go see a movie.
The net leasable area, the net renting area.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a real term.
Uh.
I was gonna say, I was gonna say.
Be careful with that word, roundable, because Oma says that.
You gotta, you gotta be.
And then, yeah, note that it excludes.
This progress, all right, somebody want to make a motion? Well, well, hold on, is there anyone from the public that wants to be heard on this? Apparently, no, it's the public portion of this, John?
So in addition to that, can we exclude any parking structures?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, we're talking about.
That is it.
Oh, it's, okay.
Just the residential, residential rental area.
Or if it's.
Not the hallways, not the elevator shafts, not the. Just the livable area.
Yes.
Could be condominium.
Sure.
Yeah, it's leasable area or, because you could have, we're talking about residential, you could have.
Unless the habitable word, that will see.
Might use leasable earths.
That's a fine term.
Then you make a motion.
John, you want to make a motion?
No. And then on the ground floor, let me ask everybody this, on the ground floor, are we gonna allow you to do whatever you want, or do we actually want to activate the ground plan and say, hey, you must restrict the uses, or no?
You know this as well as I do, every different building has a different programming for the ground floor, whether it's the ramp up to parking or whether it's, you know, back a house for a restaurant, or dumpsters for the building, you start, you start tearing it down that much, and all of a sudden, these guys are gonna go, look, I can't even get a dumpster there. I think if you tell them, hey, you've got to, you've got to put X amount of square feet, you figure out where.
We'll let the zoning code deal with it.
Under five, over five, exactly how.
Because obviously, they're not gonna have an exposed podium with garage use with nothing.
Exactly, exactly.
Because zoning will take care of that.
Is anybody taking notes?
To clarify, so the, so for for five acres and under, we're using the total site area.
Yeah.
Ten percent of the site area. And then anything over five acres, it's ten percent of the net saleable or leasable area.
Yeah, residential, these.
Residential habitable area.
Yeah.
Because if you have huge public terraces that are open to everybody, that shouldn't be back, it should be in the occupiable rented, habitable area.
Okay, and I would define that in the section, what that is, but it's everything within the wall of the actual apartment unit.
Apartment.
That's what.
Habitable area.
By the law.
Yeah, I think, I think, and the reverse.
I think the leasable or or resident owner or something similar, because remember, with habitable, that's, that's the lobby.
Yeah, it's.
Yeah.
Like have.
So that.
Now, that, that.
Yeah, we want to exclude that.
Should be inside the area.
Residential.
For the internet, net leasable excludes all the common areas, and it's only the space that may be rented to tenants.
Right.
Gross includes.
Okay, I think, I I I think they can figure out, you guys can figure out the line.
Yeah, we'll, we'll work on that.
So, is there somebody that wants to regurgitate this one?
Okay.
So that we can.
Smart, it's a smart Jake.
Oh, he's so kind.
Let's hear it.
Okay, um, move to um approve with the um change that it be for for projects, um, for sites under five acres, the amount of commercial yeah, five acres and under, um, it, the amount of commercial space shall be greater than or equal to ten percent of the net site area. And for uh sites greater than five acres, it shall be based on ten, commercial space required will be greater than or equal to ten percent of the total net leasable area.
Wait, four, oh, hold on, you forgot, we're saleable area.
Or saleable.
Converts to.
Is that what you want?
Exclusives of common area.
Good.
All right, so we have a motion.
Good job, Jay, I'll second that, Jay did a fine job.
You want to second that, Brad?
I would.
Brad will second that, is there any more discussion before we put it to a vote?
See, that's how things should work.
Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously, all right. Good night.
That's it, right there.
Was there anything else?
It's the smartest thing you want.
Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Thank you.
Post.
Yep. And, well, I thought so I thought, I thought, do you have an update on it?
I think I just a little bit modeled every year.
Imagine that. Thank you. That hurts.
Well, I'm pleased by our staff with the board request, I think, unfortunately, it, when it's by us on the first, third Tuesday of the month, it sort of lays it over, so I mean, I'd like to see the parking code get addressed, I'm not gonna ask the commission to do it, if they're not.
We're asking staff for the commission.
Well, it would still be a communication to the commission, but I think with the distinction that we weren't asking for the overall, not all the requirements, or the hand services that are specific, such as medical offices, storage, hotel that has ballet versus such that things have changed, and just look at the specific categories that are impacted, not necessarily issues or events.
So I met with staff several months ago to talk about the medical piece, right, because the parking for medical, it's something like six point nine per thousand in a market where there's so much telecommunic, telemedicine and this and that and the other, that it becomes becomes very difficult with a lot of office buildings around at the moment in vacancy, where you where you could otherwise put some medical into those buildings, but you're not, you can't meet that parking threshold, that that parking for in most cases for medical, should really be almost consistent with office. And there might be a couple of medical uses in particular, you know, maybe, you know, for a dialysis center or something that attracts more people, which is generally my personal opinion is um that office and medical should be parked at about the same at this point, and I think that would really help the absorption of some office buildings that are around and certainly help them going in the future. That was something that I met with and discussed with them at Lincoln, was supposed to come out as communication change.
So I don't know how to couch that communication, obviously, we'd like to see if the address.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think they even part it, I I really feel like it was sort of, kind of just bailed in this, like, that big project was on there and people are very sensitive about parking and reductions, and I think they just saw it as like broad overhaul, but I think it could be specific and point out some uses that you all understand that there is a market that's different, we did research for a year on that.
Right.
And we concur that Fort Lauderdale's requirements are actually higher, so we are probably inconsistent in this aspect uh than other adjacent.
We'll take another run at that, that would be great.
Yeah, so um, do you want to just maybe quickly formulate one that's specific to some of these uses?
If you want to put the words together, they come for me.
Yeah, I think he took this.
So.
Well, which are the ones we've peeked in, obviously.
Jay's to that.
No, I don't have. I'm gonna save this for another.
The hotels and condos.
So so let's let's do, let's let's I don't want, I don't want to rush to throw something together and then it not be clear and concise. So maybe we spend the next thirty days and and everybody think about, or go back and visit the minutes of what we've talked about and try to hone in more.
You like, you like. You don't want to take it, that's medical, they're just. Can I add? Can I ask legal, is it a violation of any sunshine or anything, if we email our, the the question we want to ask the city, I don't want to have communications that.
Not to Ella, but not to each other.
Okay. But all of us can be on it directly.
She would send it out.
No.
No.
Ella would send it out.
Okay, no worries.
That's why I like that, that's why I know she's so smart.
I have a question.
Okay.
That might be able to help us in kind of identifying those things, do you have a list where you could just collect all the parking reductions granted in the last five years?
Not even that.
And what uses? Because they would be common ones, the hotel we know, the.
The only receipt, John, is to reach out to people like Necaria and Robert and and Courtney and uh, well, we're in here asking for these things all the time. You know, I mean, nobody wants to put their client in a in a bastardized situation where, you know, yeah, I got you a fifty percent reduction, sorry, nobody's coming on the brand. I mean, it's just, it's 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 not common sense. So, if you can get that out, and then let's include their child to the land use attorney, that are. So we're still adjourned, so.
All right.
To get there as well.
All right.
Perfect, but we're still adjourned, so.
Thanks. All right, no, they didn't, they didn't accept your.